...and so we keep an eye on it.
Okay, were you able to pledge?
I pledged. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of liberty and justice, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
In the city council.
Yeah.
Yes, what a good stuff.
I gotta come up and say hi to you guys.
Never in a town.
Okay, we have the end of the course. The addition.
Move we approve.
Point three yesterday. Bob Harland approved the agenda. Second by Rick. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Agenda is approved. We have minutes from five eleven to five. The addition of instructions to the minutes.
I would like to approve. Offset.
Second by more. Second by Gary who approved the minutes. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Close and Gary. Okay, any comments from the general public? Anybody got something to say to Harold and Gary?
Is Rick gonna be here today?
Yep.
Can you kinda, or do you guys know about the bond deal?
On that DD two?
Well, you've already went through the eighty some thousand you were saving. You're into the bonds now.
We will be, we will be.
How long's that good for?
The bond? Is it two years?
I think so.
Two years. From its completion date, we haven't been wanting to complete it, so we got more time, so... I don't know if it's completed. Are we calling it?
I don't think we've completed it yet.
We have a completion date. We'll have another two years after that. I mean, when that completion date starts, that's when the two-year time.
How long are you gonna be able to wait on the completion?
I don't know. I hope we find out today. That's part of the questions for Rick today.
I just...
Don't know.
That's such a disaster. This thing's gotta drag it out as long as it possibly can. We're just gonna keep having trouble. I mean, that deal where you were out there, normal contractor would have had that all cemented, all the liquid fiber. And if, that's what he did on the whole thing. So, it's gonna be ongoing. And then, uh...
Did they get that fixed, Gary?
Yeah, they did fix it.
Got that hole fixed, that one.
What, did they flame that other line?
No. Still don't understand the water still is going the wrong way.
But they did patch that hole in and then fill it in?
Also came out and worked on it. And, um, ended up on the remix. Went and bring out the yard cement, go over it and get it all done, but, uh, it was a mess.
Can maybe others pop up your side before you say it?
Well, yeah, there's more out there than the rest now.
How far is it from where it entered into the creek, uh, to that spot? Could they camera that and see what's...
A mile.
Oh, is that part of the wood?
From where it falls, take it, take a drive time and you walk all the way up it. They're seeing pipe all the way up his...
No, we're talking about the old line, right? We're just...
Oh, you're talking about the old line?
No, where that hole was in the field, we went out and looked at it, we did.
Well, that, that, that is one of the old lines. I don't know. There's a dump right there.
Did you have their question, what you found out there on Gary's? Give us a rundown.
Right, Gary, take a look at them.
Yeah, give it a look then.
Is what happens, they put a T on there and then they put a short piece and that was all he did was put drain ladder over it.
Didn't hold it.
Sunk it all in.
Didn't hold it.
And the T, it was six inches below grade, so we got it pulled up. And got it back to grade, packed rock the best we could, because Gary's out there, there's a lot of water on it too.
You did contract it, didn't you?
And, uh, we got it back to grade and then we, uh...
Put it in the first time.
Slid the T tighter to the, to the west side and then we brought a cement truck in and poured the concrete. That last picture, you'll see that.
They just settled the water push this, where that T was, it sunk that lower, I suppose.
It was about six inches below grade.
Well, we got rock under too, didn't we?
Yeah, we got the best we could anyway.
Yeah, with water.
Stick your fist in around it.
Yeah, you could stick your fist in around it or suck the dirt and stuff and...
Sure.
But that whole system was put in that way.
Okay, I see where you got the cement now.
Bob, you get any comments?
Well, the ones that they fixed on mine are the same way. They basically settle away, there's no rock set below them and then just settle away. And so, the same thing's happening and there'll be more happening. I mean, when you bring your farm town, you make a forty-five, I mean, a ninety-degree pond down, you know, it settles and, that just settles the whole drainage thing, the tile squishes and you're gonna have issues. And we've already fixed about four of them on ours and so...
Did you ever see any rock on site out there? I never did.
No.
Never seen anything like it.
No.
Whole main tiles, they have rock there. Rock dope.
Yeah, I mean, I know when, when you're in conditions like that, you do. Well, I did see rock over there in that one section where they're digging a dawg.
You mean the one just now?
The whole one where they dug Randy Davis' rock out the pile out there. Oh, yeah. But they never put any rock below it to stabilize it. The pile's just sitting on top of the old limestone, it's just good either, so...
And it's right in the contract, that the contractor's supposed to use the curb bucket for that tile to sit down there. He never used the curb bucket, it was a flat bucket the whole way. I've never seen anything like that.
And the reason they do that is for the structure of the tile, the strict of its stuff. I mean, he just put it in a flat line.
That's for the, the plastic tile, correct?
Yeah.
Plastic or cement.
But I know the plastic tile people suggest using a spoon.
Well, they do with a spoon.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, people do with cement too.
Yeah.
They'll just set right in there.
What's a long range projection by after you're done? Tear it all out and start over?
No. No.
Well, I know there's another one at Russ's farm, that's just what, uh, east of there. It was agreed, it's a lot too, but I think it got tired, so we got a little bit to dry up or good. But there's one out there that bring this, didn't get hooked up or something, so...
And we're blaming the chain, guys, but who's keeping an eye on it? Nobody.
So, let's ask Rick about it.
The Rick cops were spoiled. What the bloody word is supposed to be?
Okay, sixteen feet deep, yeah. And we have fifteen, fifteen feet deep, right? Uh, how deep was that? Probably?
No.
Probably ten.
Ten.
Ten overall. I stopped out and looked at it one day and, like you say, the water's running backwards in that tile because of the pressure on the old main, is that the reason?
Well, it, it was running backwards.
It was going back. Oh! Yesterday, you know, water was going that way.
That way. And, and that one, you know, when we dug, found the, where the old tile had been dug in, it was, it was evidently tied to the northwest from there. Well, by the way, this looked like it was running backwards. Once we got it pulled back up, what it was doing was restricting there and then running back.
Oh, I see.
It slowed it down.
When we got it pulled back up to grade, that was flowing.
Oh, it really wasn't running backwards. It was just back.
The intake, it is going backwards.
It's pulling west.
The intake, it is with that in the ditch.
Rick copper, he doesn't know either. He's seen it.
Why would that do that to us?
Really, really, it's gonna be running both ways and then taking that T and down to the main?
Well, the, the T, like I told Gary, I think that T's offset. I don't think it's sitting right over the main. Because we shined in there, I shined the light down and the guys, when we had that opened up, they couldn't see the light, so it's, if it's offset, then you have...
So, you're talking about the intake in the ditch?
It, is offset, off.
Oh, it's not. If I'm a seventeen-inch tile, I'd made it that tall.
But that one we were working on was twenty-two and a half.
Well, yeah. How did you feel part of it? But that, uh, where's, where's the water? I don't know.
I don't know.
But I'm just afraid that we're not, and then you went straight across. That's not, I don't know, you should have had a Y up farther so the water could go into that. That tile was so overloaded. This thing was designed wrong. When people above that area now have tile problems and have to replace that hundred-year-old tile, they're gonna get assessed all over again. Because they took off with it from a different direction. They should have followed the old main up. Is that right, Bob?
Yeah, they probably should have. They, they followed the branch instead of the main, right?
Right. They followed the branch and took a whole different route. So, now that old main is all there by itself, which will have to be replaced because it's close to a hundred years old. And then these people, including myself, are gonna get assessed again. And it's all new to the way that was engineered. I just cannot believe people sat here and put up...
I think part of that problem was with idals, that's how they wanted it designed. They weren't gonna find it so...
That's right, and we should have followed it.
So, then I guess we should have turned it down if you didn't want it. And that's the people's choice.
But a lot of people didn't understand all that.
Well, it's hard to understand all that, but the point being is to get that kind of drainage closed in ag wells, they gave direction on how, what direction they wanted to do it.
Yeah.
Either you close them or you don't. If you didn't wanna close them, then I guess you go that route.
But they could have gone the other, we should have gone to those people and explained to them what's gonna go on. They just were looking after themselves to get the wells closed. But they weren't looking at the long range picture.
Yeah, they're looking at the shortest distance.
Yeah.
Cheapest amount.
Cheapest.
Yeah.
And that's how they're gonna close it.
It sure was, wasn't it, Bob?
I, I can't, I'm not an engineer, I don't know that, Gary, but it would make sense to follow the other direction, but I don't know what the cut would have been coming from the corner of section six back towards section seven, or five, I guess, back where those drainage holes were in Lloyd Davis's. But, you know, he still went twenty-six feet deep through.
Well, and here's the other problem with a hundred-year-old tile. You know, just running a new and alongside it isn't like it's good either, because it's, the old one's gonna fail eventually. The problem is if they done nothing, if they would have never closed these ag wells, that hundred-year-old tile would eventually collapse too. So, I mean, I don't know what's right around there.
Well, then they tapped the old line.
It's when you start messing with the new and the old, that's where you're gonna have problems.
So, the old line has tapped into the new one right there in Gary's field and also sitting down there.
That's right.
At Leggett Field or the County Graves Field, the old tile has pushed into the new tile down there also, down there right by the fence line, by Mercer's and all that.
So, does that help or hinder the old tile? That's the question.
They make a private tile out there in part of that field because it's, nothing coming in the, on the top side, nothing.
Nothing on the bottom?
So, I mean, it's private tile out there for use, so it should help that farm better. Why don't get the old tile looked up to it again?
Seventy-five percent money come back to buy it, you're talking about.
Well, I don't...
No, I wouldn't say it came back to buy it. We just, we just had things, issues putting it in the ground. The money was probably good to have done, to get this done. Otherwise, five years from now, and the permits, or two years from now, when the drainage permits were done for the drainage wells, they would have said, "Sorry, close it. Here's your permit, you're life and you're closed." And so, then you have drainage wells with no drainage.
I think the other part of the problem is these are getting harder to close and more complicated and that's not making it any easier.
So, what had to do with the design like Gary said, maybe we should have followed the old line clear around like it should, like they was, but this is a sign they had. Second one is, we should have stopped after the first week of construction and had them fix right there what was wrong to begin with. Then if it couldn't get it fixed then, we should have continued on with somebody else. The contractor we knew from the get-go was wrong because we put those seventy-two inch pipes in, we didn't get it pushed tight enough together and we knew that the first week. So, we should have stopped right then and then reevaluated.
It's too late now.
It's just a disaster from the get-go.
It's too late now, right.
It's too late.
Well, we have, we have to use.
The contractor's out of business, right?
That's right.
That's why I'm saying, how long can you extend this bond? Because this is gonna be, I don't know, maybe not for a long time, but it's gonna probably be...
Well, we haven't closed on it, so you got, uh...
Two years.
Probably two to three years, uh, down the road.
And I guess that being said, Gary, I think now, if we got two years, we better utilize this two years and figure out what we need to do to make sure it's, we get as much back or much out of it as we can. So, that's part of our in-closed session, you know, we need to discuss some of this stuff. I think, I don't think we keep wait, I don't think we can keep waiting on this stuff. I think we need to start addressing what direction we're gonna take, because it's gonna be two years, real quick, it doesn't take long for two years to go by, you know?
All right, I got one other thing. If you guys give any more thought to leaving these driveways out here where this new power line is going in, I just cannot believe, I drive out there and look at those driveways and they are the best driveway you could possibly put in. The county can't put one in that good. They're all put in the grade, they're all got the pipes they're supposed to have, and you're gonna have the people tear every one of those out. I'm still stressing, you guys don't understand, and Jerry, you should, you're a farmer.
Okay, Gary, here's, Gary, here's how it's going down right now.
What's that?
Here's how it's going down at this point in time, from what I know, how we're at in handling this. Those are temporary driveways. They are owned by MC. They have rights to those driveways till the project's done. Project's not done yet. Project will not be done probably this year.
Or it's not.
What Paul is doing is taking applications from farmers that have those driveways, just like if they wanted a new driveway, asking for a permit for those driveways. Chances are, they may get turned down for whatever reasons he wants to turn it down. That file will come to us and we'll have to review them one at a time, all at a time. I think they're gonna come all at once. We'll review them and then the board of supervisors will decide how to handle them. At this point, you need, if you want them, you need to get a permit, just like you want a new driveway. They're probably gonna turn down, if you've got two, what is it, two and a quarter mile or something like that, yeah? Or more than two and a quarter mile, they may be gonna turn it down because you got too many driveways. Okay, maybe you'll be agreeable to take out a poor driveway you got if you want to do that. Maybe you won't, maybe you'll come in and request to leave them all in. But that'll be all determined individually when you come in, request to leave, you know, the, uh, alteration or a change to the board of supervisors. We'll have the final say. But at this point, there's nothing, it's still their driveways and if there's problems, the engineer will, they'll come in and tell us what they think the problems are, we'll have to determine if that's a problem or not, I think.
But you don't quite get it. We're talking the driveway. Forget the driveway, Paul. I'm talking about a, a nice turnout, a new meat combine with an eighty thousand pound truck. It is so nice to be able to get off the road with that combine.
Right.
Eighty pieces of foot.
But I think if I mean...
Why not leave them? I mean, Paul is totally against driveways here.
No, Paul's, Paul's following the rules. He has to turn them down according to our, is it a resolution or?
Right.
He has to follow the rules.
I know that.
So, then they come to us to get them, to oversee the rules.
Okay.
Paul's not saying everyone has to come out. He's just following, you know, he's, he's following the rules.
He's got that rule so many...
Okay, along those lines, I talked to, um, Don Bash, I talked to Keith Denford, I talked to, um, the other guy down for Dodge, so, Cat Fletcher. And they have similar policies. I don't know what they're gonna do, but at this time, they have similar policies where they don't want driveways more than two per half mile. That's, Webster County's that way. Wright County, or Consoot County, they're looking at it too. Cause, or Webster County, they don't want any maintenance on it. They're gonna say that they're as-is and if there's something needs to be done, you're gonna have to pay for it. Everybody's got a little different idea on it, but most of them are all calling temporary driveways and they're gonna have, farmers have to come in and request a permit to leave them or put them in or leave them in. So, they're all handling it the same way at this point.
But Keith's taking field the same way as I do, why not leave them?
Well, then he, he'll have to bring that to his board and his board will have to decide that. If they have a different...
But Keith, the supervisor.
Yeah, Denford, yeah. And if he has, if they have, if their engineer has a different policy than he has to follow, they'll have to override that. I mean, I think this is a unique situation. This doesn't come along every year that you get driveways like this. My under, my thoughts would be maybe we should, the three counties kinda get together and see what everybody's gonna do. Maybe we do something in general, maybe. I don't know.
I just can't believe it.
But they're not gonna be taken out yet. There's a file, they're gonna keep them in already and I know there's... I know there's several names on, on the, in the file. I haven't looked at them.
I've talked to...
And they haven't been discussed yet because it might be discussed all at once at one meeting. Because everybody's gonna have the same questions and you just as well tell it to everybody the same way, so... Is that what you guys would feel? You right?
You need to put...
I believe them as far as I can.
You need to put something in the paper about them.
Well, we can and I, Consoot thought they might do that. Webster didn't know if they'd do that. I don't know what...
I mean, the time I brought this up, you guys sent balls right where the pole is, why don't you want to drive?
That was my misunderstanding, because I thought they were gonna use these driveways and help set the...
I'm saying, yeah, but I'm just saying, I'm not totally saying you need it for the field driveway. I'm saying you need it for a turnout.
Yeah.
These, machinery's gotten so damn big. And you look down the road and you see a tractor coming with a big field car.
Well, Gary, that being said, the idea's great and most of the farms have two of them. They don't need two of them for a turnout, but if they want them, I think they can put it in their request. Maybe they'll take out a poor smaller driveway. I mean, they're, most of the farms have at least two. You wouldn't need two per every half mile for a turnout.
No, they don't, but I mean, they're there.
They are not.
Take them out. Paul just thinks that they're bothering the drains, he's got all kinds of excuses, which is a bunch of bull. The driveways aren't hurting anything.
Well, at this point, every engineer...
They ought to get out of two.
At this point, every engineer in, all three counties are looking at them similar. So, it hasn't been resolved in any county.
All right.
We gotta, I think, Gary, we gotta open some bids. Everyone has competition, so we'll continue this discussion afterward, but we need to... I think what they've thought is clear, Gary, this driveway, we can't still be there. We gotta wait until the project gets completed and tell you the same thing. Okay, it's...
I'll make a motion, we close time for receiving bids.
Okay, and once you go on and close bids to receive, close them. Once you get to close the time to receive bids, wait a second.
Second.
Second by more. All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Brad, you wanna... Brad, here for the architectural review in this room.
I passed the scalpel down.
We have four bids.
I don't bid ten figures. I think you got a lot of...
Yeah, they were.
Well, you've got to compromise, all right. What's that, Jerry? Oh, hey, give me that bag. Thought you'd burn it. Did you get a rash?
Okay, Dave, you get my scalpel and letter, hoping it works, yeah?
First, do you want to do that?
Uh, it's fine.
Um, we're gonna hand the bid bonds to you to look over, so...
Okay.
I'll get a look at that, so... First one is Jensen Builders.
First of all, could, with contractors we have here today, could somebody say who you're from and representing? I see Sam, who do we got here today? Let everybody know. Steve?
Yeah. I thought you said, yeah. Steve Sanz, Sanz Construction.
Who else we got here today?
Steve Ollard with Jensen Builders.
Taylor Pearson, also with Jensen Builders.
Taylor.
Anthony Mike with Order of Construction.
Thank you. Okay.
All of this will be taped on time.
Everything appears to be in order with the bid bond?
Pardon?
Everything appears to be in order with the bid bond?
Yep. Should be. Seven hundred forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
That's a basic bid?
Yes. Seven forty-seven, five hundred. And then there's an alternate price down there for alternate number A1. I don't know if you want me to read that out too?
Yes, please.
Okay, alternate A1 is ninety-two hundred dollars. Cross you. Second one is from Kolasha Construction. K-O-L-A-C-I-A.
What's your location?
Portage. I'm not sure which one's bid bond and which is the other, because it doesn't... Oh, it does say right there, okay, on the top. Okay, there's the bid bond. Okay, their bid is seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars. That's seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred. Alternate, alternate number A1, twelve thousand, two hundred. Twelve thousand, two hundred on alternate A1. Third bid is from Sand Construction and Supplies. We hope. Here's everyone's sign. Their bid is for nine hundred, three thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. Nine oh three, one eight six. Alternate number one A, two thousand, two hundred. That's two thousand, two hundred on alternate A1. And our last bid is from Woodruff Construction. And that's out of Fortage. Woodruff Construction LLC, if you want to vote in. Appears to be seven. Seven, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred. Seven seventeen, nine hundred. Alternate A1, twelve thousand. That's seven seventeen, nine, and twelve thousand, three hundred. That is all the bids that we got.
What's A1?
Uh, that's the impact of this regrazing on all of those exterior windows. We just wanted to break that out, so we had a cost on all that and could make a...
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Open for discussion. Does anybody have anything you wanna say about the bid, the range from seven seventeen to nine oh three? Oh, we got three that are really competitive. That's, that's a good sign. Any comments from the public? Anything you wanna say, anybody?
What was the project estimate?
Our latest budget came in right around seven hundred thousand. It ranged from six seventy-five to seven twenty-five is where we were at. It ranged from six seventy-five to seven twenty-five is where we were at.
Good.
I suppose if there's a public, uh, the parents feel better would be, uh...
Woodruff.
Would rather settle seventeen, nine hundred. Watch review those and...
Yeah, we're in for a week and we'll record them next week.
I can take time this week, talk to Woodruff, and qualify the bid, make sure everything's good.
Sure.
And then, uh...
I'd take one.
As I understand it, at your next meeting, then you're able to take action on that. So, I can, I can do that just on my end and then I can let you know where we stand with that and, uh, move forward from there.
We'll put that on agenda next week then.
Certainly.
Tuesday.
So, let's start aid on this bid.
Well, one of the things we talked about previously was state review being a piece of this. And actually, in talking with Hornblower there, because there aren't no state dollars in this, we can actually move forward with this as soon as we get the contracts lined up. We could move forward pretty quickly here. So, it's a matter of timing this out with, uh, the sheriff there and the move and having everything coordinated. So, I think that's one thing that we'd have to work through, but we could, we could get the ground running pretty quickly here.
So, they've already done a fair lot of prep work moving, wasn't getting ready to move equipment and stuff, so...
Okay.
Good.
Meeting will be Tuesday. Thank you. We'll move on here, uh, open a hearing, public hearing for, uh, Senate Amendment fourteen dash fifteen.
Second.
There is motion second for open public hearing for Senate Amendment. All those favorites say aye?
Aye.
Close name, so preparing. Peggy will, that's if back to discuss the budget and what's involved.
You got not a lot of changes this time. I went through and added in... Oh, you do have some here, copy script for the press if you want to. I interjected some revenues this time because we're getting close to the end of the year and it's nice to bring in some of those revenues we received that we hadn't budgeted or hadn't planned on. So, we brought in about a hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred in revenue, um, mostly in the intergovernmental category. That helps. Um, the Public Safety and Legal Services area of the budget, we amended that by forty-one thousand. That was mainly for our new deputy sheriff and some service of paper charges. You never know how many papers a sheriff's gonna have to serve. And as you get towards the end of the year, you find out it's sometimes a little higher, a little lower than what you anticipated. So, that's why we bumped that up. Physical Health and Social Services, which is on line nineteen, we raised that by twenty-two thousand, five hundred. And that's because of the juvenile shelter cost and rental electricity for the VA office. County Environment and Education is on line twenty-one. We only upped that by twelve hundred dollars. Um, we wanted to show some additional costs for mileage for the zoning department. Under Roads and Transportation, we raised that up by eighty thousand. And Paul had in his notes, um, asphalt patching and roadstone. And I gave you Paul's additional sheet there so you can see. Um, on line twenty-three, Government Services to Residents, we raised that by just two thousand. Um, additional little costs for township per diem. Uh, we had a special meeting for township proceeds. That added a little bit extra cost to it. So, we thought, well, just to be sure, we're gonna raise it up a little bit to cover all those costs. It didn't come up to that amount of money, but you always add a little bit extra to it just in case you have an additional meeting for the end of the year. Administration on line twenty-four, we raised that by seventy-one thousand. Um, that's mostly the cost for the engineering fees for the LAC. So, that was a big expense we were taking out of the Board Supervisors budget and decided we should move it into its own, so... Um, capital projects, eight hundred and eighty thousand. That's Paul's carryover money for bridge and box project. So, the total was one million, one hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred, because we also added a transfer in there too of some money of forty-seven thousand. So, the total budget of this was the one million, one hundred and forty-four seven. So, that puts our ending cash balance as of June thirty at, from four million, eight seventy-four to thirty-six, down to three million, eight sixty, oh thirty-six. But we're still in good shape, so don't have to worry about having a low cash balance to do it back.
Any discussion on the board? If you, what, figured out pretty good.
Okay.
Still got a lot of new changes. Comments from the public on the budget amendment? Any motion to hold the public hearing?
Second.
Rick, have a motion, President Morton. Hold the favor of closing the public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Close name, motion carry. Our next item will be to approve the resolution two thousand fifteen dash thirteen for a budget amendment.
I'll make motion to approve resolution twenty fifteen dash thirteen.
Second. Senator Harlan, hold the favor of the resolution two thousand fifteen dash thirteen for a budget amendment. Say aye? Close name, motion carry. Okay, moving along, we need to have a public hearing for confirmation of county ordinance. We're pushing a public hearing to discuss confirmation changes.
Your motion to approve?
Second. Second.
Motion to carry, Senator Morton. Any favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close name, motion carry.
This is a subject we've been working on in our office on and off for probably the last six months, trying to get ordinance updated. It's been a while since I sent these all out to the departments, but they did have them all thrown back in that. And there hasn't been a huge amount of changes. I think I gave the board a copy of ordinance number sixty-two. This is a copy. Ordinance sixty-two has all of the ordinances in it that are active. I also have for you guys, and I don't think I gave you that, the one that was revoked. Um, these are ones that maybe were an amendment to another ordinance, so now they're combined into one ordinance. No really big major changes. There were two, ordinance eleven and ordinance thirteen, we raised fees on those. And ordinance eleven was the private water well construction permit. And fees went from seventy-five dollars to a hundred. And then thirteen was the onsite waste treatment and disposal system rule. And we raised that fee from seventy-five to one twenty-five. Um, those were recommended from the Public Health Department, so those were changed. Everything else was combining, you know, there'd be an amendment and then a few years later may be an amendment to that ordinance. So, you had the two together. So, there's some that had several amendments to them. Um, the rest are cosmetic things. You changed your code section number, um, changed titles from the administrative assistant to executive director, you know, things like that. So, there was a whole lot that we changed. There was just a few. And so, I have a list for the board members of every ordinance we've had, which ones are active, which ones are deleted. I thought you might be interested in just knowing, because you look at the ordinance sixty-two and there's numbers missing. And you wonder why there's numbers missing. So, I did research and found all of them and said, all right, here's our complete list and what's deleted. So, this is what it comes down to, is just at least keep one file.
We cleaned them up quite a bit.
We cleaned them up a lot.
It was a lot of hours to do that.
Yes, yeah, because some of these were so old that they had been on a previous computer system and hadn't been carried forward. So, they weren't even in the, on our newest computers. So, Chris had to retype everything for me. And then, of course, she proofread them and I proofread them and we made sure that they're...
We're going by night and see your light on, we know what's going on.
Yeah, I probably turned, half asleep at my desk reading licenses. Most of them are okay, but when you get into number twenty-six, the zoning ordinance, that one's quite lengthy. There's like thirty-some pages that I have to take a long way through. But you find little things and you check some, mostly spelling things.
Other comments, anybody got something to say? Comments from the public?
Are these all on your website that we can go in and review?
No, but we should do that. We should get those set up. I know a lot of counties do that. So, yeah, if you want copies, we can do that or we can start posting some. I'll have to get, start doing that. Good idea.
Other comments from the board for public? Peggy, you'd be thanked for a lot of extra work here.
Oh, you're welcome. Glad you do it. They need to clean that, so...
How often do we have to do this?
We're supposed to do them every five years and it's probably been eight years since we've done it. A little behind, but...
You're paying a motion, closing the public hearing.
The move.
Senator Harlan, second by Morton. All those favor closing the public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Close name. Okay, discussion, ordinance sixty-two, the first reading.
To approve an ordinance, you have to have a first reading. So, I don't know if you officially want me to read the wording of the ordinance number sixty-two? No. Um, an ordinance adopting existing county code in Humboldt County, Iowa, being enacted by the Board Supervisors of Humboldt County, Iowa. Section one purpose, Code of Iowa, section three thirty-one, point three oh two, subsection ten, requires that once every five years, the county should complete its Code of Ord, compile, I'm sorry, its Code of Ordinances. This ordinance adopts ordinances already in effect, adopts ordinances that became effective after the last adopting, and repeals any ordinance deemed no longer necessary to the operation of Humboldt County, Iowa, or the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. Section two, adopting a current code, the following ordinances have been previously adopted and enacted into law and were duly published as the law provides. They are stated herein by number and subject matter and by the authority of the Board Supervisors comprise the Humboldt County Court of Ordinances. And that lists all the ordinances, section three. Code of Ordinances, copy to the Code of Ordinances as adopted herein shall be unfiled and available for public inspection in the office of the county auditor at the Humboldt County Courthouse. Section four, when effective, this ordinance shall become effective after its final passage, approval, and publication as provided by law, adopted and passed on the eighteenth day of May, two thousand fifteen. On the ordinances that were changed, we will publish those and then this ordinance to make it official that everything has been adopted. Whatever, um, you have the right to either approve the first reading and then you can waive the second and third, or you can continue it on for the next week and have your second hearing. And then the next week and have third hearing, whichever way you want to do it. It's up to you guys.
All right.
What's your desires? Do we need to take action today to approve the future first reading or we can approve the first reading and...
You're gonna publicize that in the paper then this week?
Um, I'm not sure if I'll get it in this week, but it'll be in next week for sure. I'd like to get it in this week.
You want me to waive the second and third reading and just not publish it?
Sure. Because it's not official until it's published. But I can't publish it until you've officially made motions and sent it out and to...
To get it started, yeah.
What's your desire? Do we need to waive the second and third reading or you want to go through it again next week?
I'll make a motion to waive the second and third readings by the approval of the ordinance number sixty-two.
So, you're second?
I'm second.
Okay, we go, here the motion, we waived the second and third reading of ordinance sixty-two. All those favor approve of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Close name, motion carry.
I think you will get those checked out.
Okay, it's time for us to go through the, you know?
Yeah.
Not yet. Uh, we can move down here and say, approve certification expenses of the city election, special election.
Finally got some time to put together the expenses. Um, you guys had this list, give it a packet. But I gave you a new one because I forgot to include the supply cost. And so, I thought I better have that in there. That's part of the cost of the election. The total expenses for the March third special city election were two thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars in each sense. That included, um, supply cost, notices, printing of ballots, publication of the ballot, the election officials, and the program charge. And we want the program charged this time because I felt that this election might be one, um, this is for us too, I think you guys have.
Yeah, of course.
This is for us. Um, but, but there might be a heavy turnout for this election. And I didn't want any controversy at the end of people saying, well, did you count all of them right? All the S's on the notes. So, this takes all the gas out of the machine, counts everything as it should be. So, everything is fully tested and whenever you order programming, of course, there is a cost for that for the program.
Now, we get reimbursed back from the city for that.
Yes. I have a bill attached, yeah.
Move to approve.
Yeah, motion by Harlan.
I'll second.
Second by Rick. Confirm by the expenses of March third city election. Other discussion? Clear none, all those favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close name, motion carry. Next item on business is, uh, two thousand fifteen twelve resolution for the University of Sac in Calhoun County, considering IDDA lawsuits. Harlan, you got more information on that for us?
Yes, I'm going to go to... IDDA and the three counties all in agreement, Harley were going to handle this. IDDA will collect the funds and so forth and then disperse them to the counties that are, is it Beto and Law Firm in Des Moines that they hired to represent the three counties? So, uh, and there will be a separate board, uh, of, uh, two members of IDDA and two members of the three counties that determine how the money is spent. So, uh...
Give you a chance, they're gonna withdraw that.
What was it I was watching? Was it, uh, Market to Market Friday night and they interviewed, uh, Stowe, whatever his name is down there? And, uh, he seemed to be backing off a little bit, so, uh, I don't know.
So, it's sort of been pretty unhappy with the fund group.
Yeah. Yeah.
I haven't seen Harley save any of this money to get it from all the counties, the majority of counties, and several thousand dollars left over. They're gonna be rebated.
Yeah. It's a special fund that will go back to...
The counties.
Yeah. Seeing part of that call is to give five thousand per year. So, if all of a sudden, you know, it's done in a year, we wouldn't have given the fifteen thousand all once, so... Says down the bottom there, if it's necessary, it'll notify the county additional financial support would not be necessary. So, kind of like that idea too, just let me use the others. Use it as you go, so...
You anticipate a lot of the counties jumping on board with...
Yeah, I do.
You didn't have to tell, what kind of, how many out of ninety-nine or a hundred?
Well, but, uh, for the meeting I was at, the, uh, the three county supervisors, they, they sent this letter out to all the ninety-nine counties. And, uh, they were gonna call the chairman of each county, uh, chairman of the board, and talk to them about... Pardon this, but, uh, you know, not all counties have drainage districts, but you get into the hilly counties, they do have, uh, drainage. It's all private, but, uh, so they are affected.
And they have streams too that could...
Oh, yeah.
You gotta look at it that way too.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty fifteen dash twelve. This is the resolution of support, Univista, Calhoun, Sac counties, and IDDA on drainage lawsuit.
Motion by Jerry, you'll hear a second. Second by Morton. Other discussion on resolution two thousand fifteen dash twelve? We have a question, have a question.
Well, no, I think it's a good thing to support this. We had a six inches of rain in the last two weeks. Des Moines just doesn't understand that we can't control now. And so, we need drainage, it's so important to our industry in this county, which is the largest industry. We need to support this. I think it's a good idea.
I think we need to give Des Moines Water Works a heads up too, because Sea Rapids area, they're trying to cooperate on the same thing. Here they want to fight you. Other discussion on the motion? All those favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close name, motion carry. Next item in business is, uh, resolution amending the reach dating of electronic transformation clearinghouse agreement. And this came about as a result of a workplace we had down in Des Moines. Went to a, went to the throne and changed some of the version, basically, it's all announced to. Peggy, a part of you were at that board, you talked about it. You want to add anything extra?
It's primarily, uh, the name change, isn't it?
It's gonna be called the Iowa, Iowa's Electronic Transfer. What is the name of it now? Well, we call it Electronic Transfer Clearinghouse anymore, it should be called Iowa's...
Iowa County's Technology Services.
In order to get that applicable, every county in the state of Iowa has to sign off on that, that change. Been approved with the advisory committee, been approved, but it had been discussed enough. Isaac Moore, I believe, probably approved it, hasn't it? It had been actioned.
No, we approved it, you know, just to go out to the counties to, uh, sign the new two eighty agreement.
So, to put a, to open this, we need to have a pool of this resolution. Twenty-eight.
The powers of the board, there were minor changes to the powers of the board of the twenty eighty. Uh, the advisory committee, they took a cap on the number of members.
They talked about adding one of the...
Funding.
Adding one of the region representatives too, possibly.
Yeah, now county entities know that we're getting into some other...
Eventually, maybe we'll have a communication system that everybody can use and talk to each other. Right now, it's kind of fragmented.
Yeah.
Had a lot of money spent on getting this put together.
Lots of money.
We kind of had to stop the train now as it started to run.
Yeah, I'm moving to approve.
Motion by Harlan.
I'll second.
Second by Jerry. Rick, approve resolution two thousand fifteen dash fourteen. Resolution on, uh, electronic clearinghouse, all those favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close name, motion carry. We're not stretching. Okay, we're about nine twenty-five away from three. Uh, anything to say that you had before you moved range?
Um, I got ahold of Jensen Waterproofing and he was, I, I thought maybe take a while to get this taken up at the courthouse. Um, he was up here within the next couple of days. Went around with Dave, looked at everything. Um, I told him we were interested in both tuck pointing and waterproofing. I mean, he said things are in very good shape. He said you guys have done a good job.
That's good.
A whole lot. There were some places where that roper stuff they put in has kind of shrunk and forked. Yeah, it's way, way, so there's some cracks. But he said he can take care of that. He stayed and get a coat for us.
That's good.
He's gonna be back, hopefully it won't take you too long.
Keep them on top of things helps.
Yeah. But he was really surprised at how good a shape the building was in. He kept saying, you guys have done a good job, so... Thought it passed out long, you don't hear that, but people thanking you for keeping it put up. Otherwise, it takes a lot of money to fix it up.
It's a busy job.
Yeah.
So, the roof, uh, fabric, were you gonna call it up there? Looks pretty good yet then, huh?
Um, he didn't mention anything about the roof. We haven't had the roof guy come, this is just waterproofing and tuck pointing.
See, that roof is getting close to twenty years old. We did that shortly after I got on the board.
And I think we had the guy come and look at it maybe three, four years ago and he said it was doing okay.
Didn't we put some more rock up there?
Yeah.
Yeah, some of the rock, you know, we haven't built there.
Yeah.
A few thousand dollars of stuff.
Got to go over it in sixteen years.
Should I have him come take a look again and make sure we're still...
Well, it's just something we gotta keep. I think I would since that was going to be a problem.
Yep.
Cause I know that's been, she said it's been by six years. I'll bet it's all of that, three years.
Last time the front of people up there, they thought the air conditioning, they saw just little bubbles on...
Those are the areas you don't really check over.
And if you get them taken care of when they get too bad, then...
Okay, it's time to go to drainage.
Motion to go into drainage.
Motion by, motion by Jerry.
I'll second.
Motion by Rick. All of them favor go to drainage, say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carry. We are in drainage. We'll wait, change the guard here.
Oh. Which one of these levers makes this thing rock?
You should be able to work it.
And pull out on it.
Out.
Hours. Yeah, you turn it and pull out or something.
DD six lateral eight, where's that?
That is the one that's gonna run up on the side of road. Isn't that it, the one?
Which one?
DD six lateral eight. Is that the one out here?
Yeah, it's out here on three or was that the...
No, this, this one that runs up along that road northwest.
Oh, yeah, that's one that's got all trees and stuff in it down by four. Versus in, um, that's one where they...
It's probably, um...
One in there and...
Oh, what section is it in?
Yeah, you counted some of that and it was full of tree roots and stuff, so they patched where the problems were. Now it's continuing to be a problem. I think they're gonna abandon this part probably.
It's this, this piece right here, there's a dredge that comes up.
The corner line maybe?
Runs up along the road.
Yeah.
And we're gonna repair that and then they go to the new main over.
Oh, we picked that up.
The dredge that runs north...
Most of it, well, all the work is gonna be done right in that section, I understand.
Where? Was that road that, the black, right along the blacktop there?
Uh, no, it's gravel.
Okay.
It's gravel. It's two...
There's a great, great south, run south out of that door too, on the blacktop.
Yeah, that's the other...
This is the other door.
That's what, three or what is that number there, the one south of four?
Here, this is DD three.
Yeah.
This is DD six up in here and it's section eight.
Okay.
Is that Norway? Yeah, Norway. There's a case where they're just gonna tear out the old main and put a new one. Is that in progress right now?
This is a completion hearing.
Completion, it is complete.
No, I don't...
That's what I was trying to... Set completion hearing date.
Unless I'm thinking about the wrong one. Lateral A?
Well...
Rick was there, then he left.
He called it. Man, there's a red pickup out here with a little time, I'll see if it's Rick.
Must be back again then.
I think it's one of the red pickup.
Yeah.
You heard Bob was here and he left. Just give Bob.
Bob, yeah, that's Gary.
Well, Jake, I said I was here, uh, too, and he left, so...
Hey, did you do, uh, Janus' thing yet? The other day, I thought we talked on...
Yeah, that's why I don't...
This is green here. But this is called...
That's, that's a green.
Unless they're talking about the one that...
I think it was...
That's the one?
Talking about.
Okay.
I'll tell you one, you have lateral A and I don't need, I'm not thinking around, but no, that's branch B. That's branch B we just found out.
Can I apply some of this stuff? Can I have that sometime or...
You're the one who learned your own classification.
Well, I just wondered because I noticed several of them have lots side by side in town, the exact same acres, and there's dollars difference, like fifty, sixty bucks difference between the two lots.
In town?
In town. Side by side.
Well, you can straighten those things out when you're...
Well, I, I, I mean, and then I've also looked where I have a public grant...
Yeah.
So it's three hundred... The gentleman right beside me has three point five acres and he's a hundred and sixty bucks acre stuff.
Um, which one, that area that's on DD two?
Yeah.
So it's about differs?
Absolutely.
So it's about differs?
Not as far as I... It's about difference, it's not much difference. It's a problem.
You scared?
Playing side by side, and they have acres, they have acres. I don't think it's that much different. For the house on his, mine, not their land.
See, the six lateral eight, it says lateral eight. I was thinking that was just dollar meter.
Yeah.
You'll find out all those things and...
Well, yeah, I mean, it's amazing because the price of the, the price that I go from is a hundred and ninety-eight dollars an acre, a hundred and forty-eight dollars an acre, plus a three hundred and twenty dollars an acre for the assessment out there on that. DD two.
Is the one with the house on it higher than that?
E.
You point for the week?
Yeah.
That new, new town we put in? Yeah, the assessment that I have in this sheet that was sent out to me in mail go from a hundred and forty-eight dollars to three hundred and twenty.
Yeah.
All within that two mile range.
So who is the, uh, the one you're looking for?
Did you guys point them? I don't know. All I got is the thing in the mail, didn't say.
Oh, I forget who was on that. I looked in my drawer, didn't see what.
Well, would it be, uh...
I put it home.
And it didn't say in my letter saying, invite me to the hearing, it didn't say who did it.
Would it be Brown and Martin?
Yeah. I'm just curious. I can have those later.
Hi, Rick.
Kenus too.
It's been Kenus.
Hi, Jerry.
Yeah, they quite often do that.
We're down to discussing lateral BD six lateral one A. A one. Set a completion hearing date. What's going on now?
Um, work is done except for some repair on the head wall of the culvert under the road. And that was not part of the original bid. So there's also a pile of trash out there. They were, I don't know if they were gonna bury part of that, um...
No, it's ready to be hauled on.
Okay.
Doug gonna do that or not?
What's that?
Who's Doug gonna do that or...
Well, on your work order, you had contractor to do it, but maybe you'd sent somebody to talk to, Doug said he would do it. He said he was gonna start that shortly. Well, then we had all the rain.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
But of course, you know, in the meantime, the third layer is going on in the highway three and they put the extension out on the guardrail, so they can't use that driveway. So will they be planning on moving that driveway for us or are we stuck with it?
I, well, I would hope you'd have another driveway back.
We'll have to go through the field or from the...
Yeah. And that's what Doug and I talked about last week, you know? Short of a new drive, they'd be paying crop damage to get into it.
We'll have to do another one.
Yeah. So, yeah, they extended the guardrail on the north side of the road out there.
Yeah, that's not a problem with the driveway part normally, they would relocate those.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
Yeah, I haven't talked to anybody from the DOT.
Relocate that driveway, that would be too...
More crop damage. I don't know. I don't think they, honestly, I don't think they'll get through it for a long time. Going through the field, it's that soft, even where that ditch was dug.
Yeah.
And it's a surface drain anyway, so there's water moisture there a lot.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah.
It's gonna be done, but...
Well, Jerry farms that field.
You know, and then the, the other thing concerning is now the dirt's washing out. I knew that would happen, that's what Gary was just telling us earlier. It's starting to wash out, so...
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that head wall needs to be back in there. I mean, it just, yeah. Arrangements were made with Doug Marshall and like Jerry said, then it started raining, so, um...
Yeah.
There's been a lot of privatiling going on once the main pile was put in out there. You've probably all seen that if you've been east at all. Um, but Yemlin's contract, I would say is completed. Uh, you're holding a little over sixty thousand in retainage, sixty thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Now, there's, I've had some communication from Cree Techs on lack of payment for pipe. Uh, but Yemlin has chipped away at that and it, it is something under sixty thousand now that he owns, owes.
No.
I promised to Cree Techs that this would not be released until we got a release from them that the payments have been made in full, so...
You want to have by me again? You want him to pay Cree Techs sixty thousand dollars, which you're gonna hold sixty thousand until you...
Well, that's how they typically do it. We typically get, if, if there's any question, we get lien waivers from the suppliers. And they just, they're to pay their bills before the last payment is made. I, I know he probably used this money for that, but Yemlin himself told me, there's plenty of money there, I'm getting this taken care of.
Okay.
So, um, yeah. It, it basically ties up profits or whatever until the job is accepted and that final payment made, but...
So the work is continuing, outside the contract, right?
Yes.
The materials or how that...
Yes. Yep.
So two things then, the head wall is not part of the contract, so it'll be a separate billing. But then, you know, this junk pile, we have it down there, Yemlin would level and bury everything for free once the head wall is poured.
Mm-hmm.
So we do, should, do we need to retain a little bit of money there?
Possibly.
If he doesn't, cause Doug Marshall will clear it out.
Yes.
You know, I know the head wall is separate, but I don't think you should pay off a certain amount of it.
Exactly.
Because saying that he'll do it and he might, I'll just let Doug do it, you know, and then make sure the money's there.
That's right. Well, and we're setting the hearing today, it's not the hearing, so we have a little time, but yeah.
But I do think you should contact Yemlin and clarify if they're gonna remove that pile or not. Because Doug said he would, so let's not get two people doing something and nobody doing, and then both doing it. Let's find out who's gonna do it.
Yep. We'll do that, definitely.
Okay, I got a question for you.
Yeah.
In this project out there, did you inspect the joints when they made connections?
Yeah, we, we saw nearly everything, um...
And how did they do their, do they wrap them in fabric and cement them or they...
They wrapped every joint in the main pipe, um, and then the tile connections, oops, sorry, I didn't get this shut off. My phone. So... Um, yeah, we were there, um, they were done kind of in groups, um, yeah, we haven't heard of any issues.
That sounds concerning.
Yeah. Yeah.
So you were there and kinda inspected some of the main actions and...
Yes.
Were they wrapped, but they're not concreted, they're wrapped or just...
Uh, the tile connections are not concreted.
Okay.
Just wrapped. Yeah. Yep. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll see, we'll monitor it here, um, this summer.
The biggest problem they had out there was the quicksand problem.
Yeah.
They had a lot more issues in that first half, quarter mile than they...
Oh, than they ever anticipated.
They really had a slow start.
Yeah.
And then they did rock those areas.
Yes. Yes, they got to solid ground, um, and used rock. There was extra rock used on the job. That, that problem was not anticipated, um, by us or the contractor.
So when they did the, when they moved at the junction block or at the bulkhead, when they moved the old tile over, they, you know, they used plastic on that. And then they ran the new on the east or the southeast side, west side, I guess it'd be.
Yeah.
So do you see any problems with that bend in there where they put that...
I don't think so. We saw that. I saw that. That I'm quite sure submitted. We'll, we'll get a look at that again here as they're doing the head wall. Um, I'll take a look at it again out there. Um, but I had seen it when they were doing the work and it looked like they were doing a good job with it. I mean, I've been out there.
Doug, any indication, oh, it's wet now? He didn't say really what's gonna happen now.
No. No, I talked to him last week and it's on his schedule, but it's, yeah. He's had the materials for it, I guess, the rebar.
So in the meantime, you better maybe get ahold of DOT and find out if we can permit a pump from the road or a driveway, they're gonna put a driveway and they need to do that soon. By the way, Doug's gonna be another month late.
Yeah.
Cause the driveway takes time too if they're...
I'll get ahold of the DOT today.
I think we need to get an answer from them and what, unless they'll let you take that rail. I don't think they'll let you take that rail.
No.
I don't even think they will.
What's your timeframe here? We ain't got mine as far as the completion.
We need at least ten days after it's published and notices sent. And technically you just have to notify the people that, that project went through. So it's a matter of how you wanna handle that. Uh, you need to plan it out just far enough that Trish can get the, the notices taken care of. Um, she has all the addresses and all of that. So I guess Trish, what are you thinking timing wise?
Not less than ten or more than twenty.
No, it just has to be at least ten.
Ten.
Yep. Yeah, you're thinking of bidding on things.
Well, Trish, I don't think we should probably add a June eight. We got enough there. We only have more time, two weeks. That'd be good.
Can we look at the end of June?
Sure. How about June twenty ninth? All right, I'll give you, uh, five weeks.
What, Jerry?
June twenty ninth on Monday. So you're hanging out there.
Twenty five days.
What's that?
Yeah.
All right.
Let's get some more controversy on here.
All right, so I would make a motion to set the completion hearing date for DD six lateral A one for Monday at nine o'clock. So, um...
Okay, Jerry has a motion to set completion date for DD six lateral one A for nine o'clock on June twenty ninth. You'll hear a second.
Second.
Other discussion. All of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay. Motion carry. We've got other things to talk about, and Grange is four in the table session.
Um...
Yes.
Yeah, we can come.
Can I just, while you're looking, DD one twenty-five, we've been talking to the contractor, that's in the northeast of Gilmore, Denver Underground. Uh, they're planning to start getting pipe in there this week. Uh, we have staked to the first mile, basically through all of Gary's naves to the first gravel road. We've staked the pipe and cuts and we've also put last on the easement lines just to give the contractor guidance on what he should try to stay within.
That would probably be a good idea. Cause they get a little light sometimes.
Yeah, there've been some issues with that in the past.
Other than just laying the tile out, you know, they get a little bit in a hurry sometimes and they drop them off and all of a sudden you got too much in one field and then they gotta move it again.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Somebody needs to keep an eye on it.
Well, and that's, we'll be checking on that. We'll be checking the pipe joints, um...
All from experience.
Yeah. Yeah.
Bob tries them too, I'm sure.
Well, yeah, it's just a little more eyes on everything, you know, um...
No, we had this issue out here on DD two where they wrapped it in fabric.
Mm-hmm.
No cement.
Mm-hmm.
Wide enough joint where it sucked the fabric into the joint. That's what I'm wondering.
We're gonna see those joints.
We mentioned out here they never cemented the joints either.
Well, the pipe is made so you're not supposed to have to cement the joints. The, the pipe, the main pipe itself, if they're pushed together...
That's the key.
Is to be adequate. Yeah, that is the key.
I notice the mains are fine, when you tap into them, it's sort of tapping into all, all other existing tile, is where we're having our issues, isn't that right, Bob?
Yeah, a lot of it.
Lot of them are, yeah.
Yeah, lot of them are, yeah.
Yeah, that's something where we gotta stress the contract.
Yeah, we've told you what the spec, we have redrawn the detail for the tile connections, calling for rock under them all, um, going further over the top of the one up above, um, putting it on either undisturbed ground or on limestone, um, yeah, we, I, I remarked a tile detail, tile connection detail specifically now, to include in each of the specs, uh, to just really tighten that up, and we call for us seeing each one of them before it's covered, and so, um, yeah, just to try and prevent this, you know, nine out of ten contractors, you probably don't need to worry about it, but this way we guarantee that we see them all, it's all part of the spec.
Kind of like doing the house, you can't follow around all the time, but you like to think they know what's going on.
Exactly, check on them frequently enough, yeah, yep, we'll be around for things, we'll be looking, I'll be looking, Inspector will be looking, um, yeah.
Like, uh, you're on DD six, I think there's two tiles that might not be hooked up, because I see bubble coming up where they should be, where the connections look to me like they should be.
Should be if they're made.
So, with, you know, like, those things, I mean, we, we got, we got some time to get that.
You got a year after acceptance that it's guaranteed, or?
Kind of things.
Yeah, so if, if it's something you can't do right away, you've got time, so it'll be a year after this date that you just said.
So, should I let Trish know, or you know about that?
Yeah, let Trish know, we, we talk regularly.
I've talked about it a little bit.
Yeah.
Can be extended if there's a problem existing?
Yes, you can put the contractor on notice, yes.
And that would extend it for two, a full two years?
No, not necessarily, till the problems you've pointed out are taken care of.
Okay, about the bond issue, or the bond?
The bond is guaranteed for a year, you have the bond backing.
For one year?
One year after acceptance.
Oh, okay, I thought it was two.
No.
Sorry, yeah, okay.
You can do that, it, it adds to the cost of the project, and typically, those things show up within a year, and it's, if it has just shown up in that year, you have, you have, you are guaranteed to be able to get that fixed, um, sometimes the conditions aren't right and they can't go in. Matter of fact, Farmers Home Administration or Royal Development, they do an eleven month inspection on, like, buildings, which is a little easier to see than something underground, of course, but because they have a year guarantee, that's just started their, part of their standard policy, eleven month inspection. Wouldn't be a bad idea to do that on what we can see on the job, um, even if it, it's a matter of, say, well, this would be something where, say this fall, we could write it on four wheeler, this A one, look for any holes, wet spots, um, wouldn't cost hardly anything to do that, so, that's maybe something we should think about, just an eyeball and everything again.
Do you have something else?
Do you know the thirty-three branch A extension, if both contractors have completed it all?
I never heard of Yemlin got out there.
Okay, but we do know Reitzel's, right?
Yes, Reitzel's were on their way to the job when I talked to them last.
Really?
Williams', yeah.
Yeah, Thompson's.
You're not sure if they've been out there, is that what you're saying?
Right, that's what I'm saying, I.
I don't know either.
Yeah.
So, I know Virg has been waiting for me.
Mm-hmm, yes.
I knew you'd say something, they've been out there.
Would it happen for anything on one of three from Manzies?
Well, that, that project's all been done.
Who'd they bill?
Huh?
Who did they bill?
How long did it get done? Before planning, it was all done, I know.
Okay.
Okay.
Manzies did it.
Okay.
I would think they'll send it, though.
Because I was out there and watching for a while.
Okay.
Just when they sent in the bill, yeah, no? He just hasn't sent in the bill, but they have another problem on the north side of the tracks, no?
Oh, no.
There's a big hole out in his field, and it's all planted.
Oh, shoot.
So, he's had, I guess, McPeak looked at it a couple times, but, there were two different guys that looked at it.
Who's farming that now?